All right, good afternoon. It is January twenty-third. The time is three oh one P M. Uh, January twenty, is it twenty-third or twenty-fourth?
Twenty-third.
Twenty-third, two thousand twenty-four. Uh, this is a special meeting in the Argyle I S D Board of Trustees. At this time, we'll determine if a quorum is present.
Liam Mabey Jade present.
Richie Deffenball present.
Leanne Arthel present.
Matt Slaton present.
I S M Slaton present. We do have a quorum established at this time. We'll have the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On our Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the United Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
A brief moment of silence. All right, thank you. We have one person signed up, Ms. Spiegelberg. If you'd like to come into the podium for public speaking. It's gonna be okay, Mr. Bowles. It's gonna be okay.
Mr. Huff, if you'll have a seat right there with Mr. Bowles, that'd be great. I'll call you right in the middle of it. Thank you.
All right, you've got five minutes. Time's yours. You know, you can't ask any questions or make any comments.
Okay.
Here we go.
So I just want to reiterate what I said at the school board meeting. Was that this week or was that last week?
Last week.
I can't even remember anymore, last week. Um, I understand the need for the bond. I want to vote for the bond. But I also want to make sure that you guys are making an appropriate choice when moving forward with this bond. I really believe that all of the things are important, but not necessarily needed at this very moment. So ideally, I would love to see you guys come out and say this is gonna be a two-part bond. We're gonna do one part this year. We're gonna do the second part this year. This is how we're gonna break it down. I think doing it that way shows that you are sensitive to the financial situation that the district is gonna be in over the next three years and the challenges teachers will have and staff, as well as some families in the district that are also struggling with the same thing, right? Higher costs of everything. I just feel that it would have a better chance of passing if people knew that you were taking the whole entire picture into view. And then when you also add on to that, that this bond includes building MS two, ES six, and ES seven, and those are far out into the future, I do agree that we should have the money to buy the land for those schools. But my concern is that if we try to estimate how much those will cost and we come out short, it'll be really hard, especially if this band, this bond barely passes, to come back and ask for more money at a second, at a later time, if we do not estimate enough for those schools. So that is my suggestion. I don't necessarily expect you to take any or all of it, but I do feel that you should at least hear the perspective. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, that concludes, uh, public comment. We will move out to workshop time.
We do, he had already seen, so that's all good.
Are we good?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right, so I'm going to kind of kick off, um, this workshop. And we're gonna have a couple of different topics for the board to discuss today, specifically the ten-year strategic growth plan. Um, we've been talked about it a little bit. We've had some additional developments. We want to have to give you the opportunity to talk through and then also talk about the bond committee's recommendations. So that's kind of the purpose for today's workshop. I'm gonna spend just a few minutes and kind of go through a recap real quick of the fall semester up to this point from the presentation last week, just to kind of, so that everyone who's listening can hear that recap. Y'all will hear the same recap. And then we also have, um, our consultants here today. Like to introduce Matt Bowles. Um, he is with our financial advising consultant. We have Hudson Huff, our demographer with Zonda, and then Marty Sims with B O K Architects will be here. Um, he will be here, it'll probably be about forty-five, fifty minutes. He has currently presented, he was presenting in another I S D this afternoon, so he'll be here in just a little bit as well. And so back in the fall, we kicked off the bond committee in October. As you recall, meeting two is the meeting where the bond committee heard the fall demographer report from Hudson and the architect facilities and capacities assessment from Mr. Sant, from Marty. So in that process, we had the, the fall demographer numbers, but through that capacities assessment, which my understanding is, we didn't do as a district for the twenty-two bond. We, um, realized that Canyon Falls had a functional capacity of twenty-one hundred instead of seventeen fifty, which is what was being, um, used previously. And just for the record, that discrepancy came from counting core classrooms only versus core classrooms and electives classrooms, which you should be counting because your programming is using those classrooms. Same thing for three seventy-seven. We had been operating at about eleven fifty and really our functional capacity after we did the assessment was thirteen hundred. So that information was important for the bond committee. I mean, because that changed a little bit of, obviously, the capacities that the district had been operating under, which was twenty-two, I mean, sorry, seventeen fifty at Canyon Falls and eleven fifty at three seventy-seven. Fast forward to November thirteenth, that was a regular board meeting. The board heard an update on the ten-year strategic growth plan and how Hudson's numbers impacted that, kind of a timeline, if you will, of when we were expecting schools to need to come online. Meeting four with the bond committee, um, was at the, kind of the end of November after we got back from Thanksgiving. We had them review that same ten-year strategic growth plan update that the board had heard on November the thirteenth. Then we also had them, um, they saw kind of the first round of projects, if you will, um, for the, for the bond committee to consider. Those projects, after consultation, um, those projects were broken down as we were directed to complete really the ten-year strategic growth plan and really below the line. What are those things that really were below the line, what we, what were above and beyond the ten-year strategic growth plan? So that's how those projects were presented to the committee. Then the board had a December sixth workshop, so y'all remember, we came together in the same format on December sixth, kind of reviewed the data that the bond committee had been seeing. Um, we were directed at that point to make phase three at Canyon Falls up to not to exceed, uh, twenty-four hundred, based on the six hundred or less in a graduating class. Originally, we had in the project only to go a hundred and fifty seats more, since we knew twenty-one hundred plus the one fifty would get you to twenty-two fifty. So that adjustment was made with the committee to give them an option to not to exceed twenty-four hundred in that phase three, which was that much-needed connector at Canyon Falls. Then meeting five was in December, right before Christmas break. The bond committee was presented with board workshop feedback from the sixth, and they began to build their table bonds. Uh, we went on Christmas holiday break, came back January ninth. Uh, right after we got back, the town of Flower Mound had a meeting with us as an A I S D and notified us that an application of development had been made for this property behind us right here at Canyon Falls, about two hundred and fifty acres. Um, the plat right now, which is public, is a hundred acres of single-family homes, forty acres of townhomes, forty acres of multifamily. We immediately contacted Mr. Huff and, uh, asked him to look at that information. So he reached out to the developer. Developer wasn't able to give a lot of information necessarily on the number of units, based on where their application process is, but he was able to go ahead and take a yield, if you will, for the single-family homes and add that into, um, his demographer along with, um, final recommendation, or final notice received on the Heinz development. So we brought that information back to the bond committee during meeting six, for them to consider. It didn't change much, except putting elementary seven just inside the ten-year plan. So that was kind of the biggest piece that they had to really discuss that night. And then on the sixteenth, they brought you a recommendation for a ten-year, uh, growth bond. And so here we are today with the workshop. Um, you know that the bond has to be called by February sixteenth, so if you so choose to call it, and then, um, this is an opportunity to have discussions and kind of workshop those data points and the bond itself. We have some, uh, bond committee members in the room, if we so choose to ask them any questions. Dr. Johnson is also here, who is our lead facilitator. Your handouts, you have just, these are things you have seen. You've got the, uh, bond meeting six handout that the bond committee had. You've got the one from their, your presentation last week as a board. I've also got some U I L information that I'm equipped to answer questions on, um, provide my recommendations on some things, if you so choose to ask me. Um, and then we've got, the last one there is the fall demographic, demographic report, which was Zonda's report from the fall. You can dive in wherever you would like to dive in.
So the goal of this workshop is to... is to truly understand the bond, but also will be able to look at specific items and give our comments or suggestions, or is it just a, kind of, in general, all or nothing?
I think that, yes, so I think, I think this exercise is to think through the ten-year strategic growth plan and the components of it, how it was adopted. If the, if the board would like to direct the district to make any amendments to that, for instance, you know, high school split numbers, those kinds of things, in consideration of U I L, different, you know, classifications, if you want to, those are conversations are perfectly fine. Um, we can always bring a revised amended version of that back to the board for final approval. And then, obviously, you know, your committee, bond committee, put together a comprehensive package, and I think that's up for you guys to ask questions and dig a little deeper into that. And if you would like to, we've got some committee members here that can certainly speak to some of those points. Um, if you have questions, I'll call them up to the table.
Well, I'll start off with a potential discussion around, you know, the strategic front. I know we reviewed kind of the potential slowdown of it with the November data. But I think what we haven't reviewed is the, uh, you know, there's kind of four point one was we're gonna divide up into two high schools, uh, which I think we, the board has still approved because of the, uh, the impact on the students, chance for higher participation and, uh, better use of our, our facilities. Uh, the, the other component was that we do the split when our full high school capacity realizes twenty-seven hundred. And I think that was originally driven by, uh, and I'm just... from my impression, that was, that number was originally driven because that would, our, our capacity at Canyon Falls was recognized as seventeen fifty. And then, uh, and then there would be freshmen, uh, able to have their capacity over at the ninth grade center. And we all agree that's, that's okay. Well, now you realize, uh, that we have more functional capacity. And with this bond, you can potentially even have higher functional capacity. And so my thought would be, should we challenge that number twenty-seven hundred, uh, for when the split occurs? And if the bond, uh, allows us to build out, uh, a wing and have up to twenty-four hundred capacity, then I would throw out, then that would be the number we split, and we would bypass then having the need for a freshman center. Because we are basically at full capacity at the, uh, at the Canyon Falls school. And therefore, to relieve that capacity, then we, we would basically initiate the second high school at three seventy-seven.
And that would have only been a freshman center for a few years, right?
Three years max. Yeah, and so rather than, and, and our challenge of administration really believes that's best for the students, and it's worth that. I mean, it would be, you know, severe work to do the execution and the implementation of a ninth grade center, only to have it fall away over three years. I'd, I'd be willing to listen to that, but I think just, maybe it's a better measure, just plan for the split without the ninth grade center, uh, if we can realize full capacity here. Um, if we can't realize the full capacity of twenty-four hundred, if the bond doesn't get approved, then maybe we look at that number being the, uh, the twenty-one hundred of the functional capacity. Uh, and really, looking at my numbers, that would only... uh, that would only bring that split one year earlier. You know, that, that, that extra three hundred really, it only gives us one more year.
And I think that number's important because your six A cutoff's twenty-two seventy-five going into this next alignment. And it's about, usually about forty to fifty more each time. I know that's kind of what we're trending. We've looked at it, kind of researched that a little bit. So, you know, that's, if that's a, if that's a direction the board does not want the district to go six A, then that's the number we need to be looking at is, is that area right there.
And then think about, so looking at the numbers I have on hand, and I think Hudson's newest number still bring that, is, uh, is we, we're not gonna hit twenty-four hundred for years, you know, if we do the split when we were projected to.
Correct.
Right, and so that would give V I L time to go from twenty-two seventy-five to probably closer to twenty-four hundred.
You would hit, you would, yeah, because you would be at twenty-two fifty and seventeen fifty and just then hit the four thousand at that point. You wouldn't need the twenty-four, you'd be over the thousand at that point, total.
Yeah. So that, that, so I would, uh, challenge us to think about that, because I'm not sure how that impacts the, the bond planning and everything else, the fact that we would not utilize three seventy-seven as a, as a ninth grade center.
I think that's a good, for me anyway, it's a good starting point, because, um, you, you brought up six A and twenty-four hundred. Um, it's kind of what the bond line item says, right? Uh, expand capacity not to exceed twenty-four hundred. I think we all talked about it when we were, uh, putting together the strategic plan on the two high schools about having those high schools be as close, uh, in size, so offering, I hate to word parity, but offering equal opportunities. And I've even learned more since then that I've talked to Dr. Carpenter about that you can, you know, the closer they are in size, the more likely it is you can offer a set of C T E programs here. I'm gonna pick the number five, because it works a lot. Can do five down there, and now I can transfer kids back and forth, right? Um, now, we'll need to talk through that with the district to make sure that we are, have everything possible in place to accommodate all the students that want to do that, participate in that. So that, when I saw that line item, uh, not to exceed twenty-four hundred, it kind of caught me off guard a little bit, because when you go look at the U I L classification numbers, that would be today. So having that out there, I understand and probably tend to agree with it to have it for future space, uh, whether that's for collaborative space or whatever. It doesn't have to mean, because it's twenty-four hundred functional capacity doesn't mean it's all classroom. That's what we learned, right? The difference in the capacity numbers we were looking at versus functional capacity takes into account all the space that's not necessary classroom.
Administrative space.
Yeah. So, so I would even encourage us that if we are gonna continue, consider that, to go all the way to twenty-four hundred, that we, um, as a board, put something in place that says, hey, that's fine, but we're not gonna go over twenty-two fifty kids in that campus.
Well, potentially, wherever the U I L.
Right, until you reach four thousand, then we had to have the space.
And to kind, to kind of piggyback on, on all this, like, I, I know in our strategic growth plan, like, I, I understand all the, the points that are, that are written out. My sentiment singularly, uh, as a board member was that when we split to two high schools, we would not have two high schools of vastly different sizes. And, and when I do the basic math, and again, there's tons of things that go into it, when I do the basic math, twenty-four hundred versus thirteen hundred, that's a graduating class of six hundred and a graduating class of three twenty-five. Um, and those are two vastly different schools. Um, and me personally, that's not what I envisioned with our strategic growth plan, that, that we... you're never going to get two schools that are perfect in exact amount of students, because these schools are two different designs, um, with two different capacities at, at their build-out. However, it's not my, um, personal recommendation that we have school sizes in this district that are vastly that different in size, that we need to find a way to, like you said, build it out to twenty-four hundred functional capacity with a cap on it at twenty-two fifty, uh, student-wise, and, you know, look at the expansion of three seventy-seven. Um, you know, in, in a perfect world, like, we've, uh, we've seen, like, I think, two high schools that are similar in size, that offer the same amount of opportunities, not the exact same C T E types of classes, but the same similar types of opportunities for our kids to have. Um, that's what I envisioned in this strategic growth plan.
I'm just gonna go down memory lane a little bit, uh, because the numbers that were going out, twenty-two fifty, seventeen fifty, they were not like, oh my gosh, this is the perfect size for, for two separate high schools. It was mathematically driven. It was, uh, our understanding was with the full phase three build-out, we would have capacity here at Canyon Falls for twenty-two fifty. We knew we needed to get to a, a max of four thousand. Oh, four thousand minus twenty-two fifty is seventeen fifty. And we asked, could you build three seventy-seven at seventeen fifty? And we were told, yes. Now, I don't think we have fully dug into the extra parking or other means that may or may not be associated with it. And it may not, might have to use the, uh, the banned parking as actual parking. Who knows?
It's crazy.
But, uh, but, but, so the point is, now the math.
John Bitter might have words about that. So, so John Bitter might have.
Yeah, I was gonna say, John Bitter's somewhere right now.
Amen, bro. But, uh, but so, my whole point here is, the math has changed, right? Because of, of the functional capacity that, that we're actually able to realize. And, and if we do the full build-out, which I am complete supporter of the full build-out, I can't see doing half build-out right now, uh, just for a number sake, versus building that out entirely and then using the space as you determine. But, but that math now then is, if it's twenty-four hundred is the number, well then, obviously, it's sixteen hundred. But just on that, but does that make it a huge disparity? I don't, I don't know. I don't think, I don't think that's the, the point, uh, of the community. So anyway, and that might be more realizable, uh, for a build-out, you know. And I say all this, and I know I'm talking too much, but four thousand is the number we have, that's based on what we've been given for numbers. It may be far greater than that, folks. And so then we will have other discussions, you know, how, how do we...
Have.
C T programs or, or other alternatives, which is a viable option. But I'm just saying, we can't completely a hundred percent believe in numbers or have everything to them, uh, even though we do think that they're, they're fairly accurate, at least for the eight, nine, ten year window.
Strategic growth plan window.
Yeah, right.
Yeah. So I think another, another point we made too was, um, you know, we had said, hey, when we hit a certain number, that number was twenty-seven hundred, the more I got with Dr. Carpenter and talked about, um, again, when I saw the twenty-four hundred numbers, I started getting nervous about the disparity in sizes. So as I learned more about that, um, and, and thinking through, talking through with her about that there's, there are every two years is when we adjust and split. We could end up, if we base it on a number versus a year, we could end up putting ourselves in a situation that that school is still, uh, what's the word, that put into this classification and they're, they're forced to stay there for a year or more, depending on when we, if we base it off a number. So I think we even need to talk about, um, we're, we're talking about the bond, uh, that, that the committee put together and brought to us, and I think ninety-nine percent of it makes a lot of sense. But we also need to talk about if we're going to cha, make changes to what they put together or adapt what they put together, it needs to tie back to the strategic plan. So I think we need to talk about, does the split need to be based on a year instead of a number? I mean, a number, they're always gonna have a number with a year, right? We're already forecasting it. But if we do that, we can pick the year, you know, so that we're not roping a new school into being set in the classification for a year or more until the next go-round.
Well, it's probably, probably a little bit of both.
Yeah.
It is.
I mean, every year, we get, we get new, you know, demographic information every six months. As we get closer to those potential dates, they're gonna shift, the number's gonna shift, the potential year. As long as we target a year to do it, so that it does align with U I L, so we don't get thrown into it.
And in conversations with U I L, I spent, I spent a great deal of time talking to them yesterday, along with talking with some athletic directors in other districts that have been through the split and talking through why you enter into and you split in the middle of an alignment, and it makes sense. Um, because when you split in the middle of an alignment, typically, you're opening a new school with ninth and tenth graders only. You might do a junior option in there. But when you go into the middle of an alignment, you're, you're, every sport but football is gonna play a varsity schedule, and they can. U I L enters them into a district. Football is a two-year. You cannot enter into a district in the middle of a, a two-year alignment. So if you, if you open a new school at the beginning of a two-year alignment, you're gonna have to elect to either play a varsity schedule with ninth and tenth graders only for two years or not run a varsity schedule with football for two years. Essentially, then you're gonna have sophomores that are never gonna play varsity till they're seniors. So there's a lot of pieces in that. And so the recommendation, and I've heard it over and over, I've personally been through it myself and can speak to it, the middle of an alignment is where you should enter into, um, because then that way you have the advantage of getting everybody acclimated, you get your football in the middle of it, you run a renegade schedule, and everybody's ready to go for that next alignment.
So that, so looking at demographic projected numbers and knowing when the splits are, um, for U I L, those, that gives us two or three different target times that we can, we can look at to do it.
Right.
Um, and we can do it in such a time, based on, again, the projections, that will mean that we open a school very closely to the size of the other school.
Closer.
We don't open closer.
Right.
We don't, we don't open with some crazy big disparity. That number's one.
And you also, when you're doing that, you wanna be, you wanna open them pretty equally, but you don't wanna open them the same classification, because when you're splitting your first high school into two, you need to give your student athletes and your schools both a chance to identify, basically have an identity in separate classifications, even though you may have three or four hundred students difference or even whatever, four hundred. Still having them in two different classifications for at least one round, if not two, gives them a chance to get off the ground as their own, before they're both in the same classification and competing against each other. And again, have that experience. It was the most successful way we could have done it, because I cannot imagine putting two high schools into the same classification right off the bat in a community that's a pretty, pretty small town. I mean, it's hard. It's hard. I've lived it. And so if you're, if that's what you're going to do, you've gotta think through, you've gotta think through all of those and the scenarios and what that means, um, when you think about it.
Just from my numbers, I don't think they're too much different on the high school level as what Zonda's just given us. Uh, these are the numbers from November. It looks like, uh, we would, basically, twenty- Uh, these are the numbers from November, it looks like, uh, we would, basically twenty-seven is a good, year twenty-seven would be.
Twenty-seven, twenty-eight?
Yeah, because, because twenty-six is when they have, you would, you would not be going in and you, you might both have it.
You, you could, you could turn in your fall of twenty-eight numbers, I mean, you could take your fall of twenty-seven numbers that are gonna realign for twenty-eight, twenty-nine, and say you're gonna split, you could split in the middle of the twenty-eight to thirty, and be using your fall of twenty-seven, I mean, using your fall of twenty-eight numbers and still probably avoid that, one of those two are gonna have to be basically either.
What I think, if we did that, we'd move the open capacity even to twenty-four hundred here.
Yeah, because you're, according to this projection, it'd be twenty-three.
You'd be turning in the fall of twenty-seven for a twenty-eight, twenty-nine alignment, and so you would open, you would be over, but you would be, you could open in the middle of the twenty-eight, thirty, and that would put you in the middle of the alignment, setting you up for thirty, so yes, you would be hitting that.
Why are you saying twenty-eight, thirty, you're missing.
Twenty-eight, twenty, it's two, it's a two-year alignment, twenty-two, twenty-nine.
So you're talking, okay, so you're talking.
You're talking splitting to twenty-nine.
Yes, you could, if you, if you split the schools to start the twenty-nine school year, you're using the fall of twenty-eight, I mean, you're using the fall of twenty-nine numbers to do that, but you're in the middle of an alignment, but again, that's already got you over twenty, it's twenty-three, twenty-nine, so you really have to back that up.
So you really have to go back farther?
Correct.
So you have to go, like, to twenty-six, twenty-seven?
Yes, but splitting in twenty-seven, twenty-eight, you would actually be splitting in the twenty-seven, twenty-eight year.
Yeah, that's, I think that's.
Which works out in all the.
Yes. And using your fall of twenty-seven, so if you, the way the U I L regs are written, if you split in the middle of an alignment, they're gonna use your actual enrollment. They don't do the multiplier if you start in the middle, so if we just open with nine, ten, then they will put us in a district based on our ninth and tenth grade numbers for one year. And then the next one will be nine, ten, eleven.
Is that how you see it to be most successful, is basically starting off with nine, ten, which they're still considered part of.
Nine, ten with the junior option, I think the junior option's important.
Okay.
Because you have kids, when you're, when you're splitting, you're splitting because one's getting big, so if you do the junior option, you're gonna have kids that potentially are not making, may, may not be making cut teams at the bigger school, that now have the opportunity to go spend a junior and senior year where they can compete. Um, you've also got students that might not be in the run for top ten percent, that can go over and get settled in, and be in the run for top ten percent as a junior and senior.
So from academics perspective, uh, that's, that's feasible.
It is.
To allow juniors to opt in or out to the new.
So I'm, I'm wanna make sure I understand this, so we would turn in, you know, our enrollment in the fall of twenty-six?
You, you turn in the fall of, you turn, like, we turn, we just turn in, you, you turn in the fall of an odd year for an alignment. So we just turn in fall of twenty-three for the twenty-four through twenty-six alignment, so you turn in on the odd year.
So if I turn in, I can't turn in in the fall of twenty-seven, and then stay one more year, when would you split?
Right, so we would announce with U I L that we're splitting the following year, and they would capture our number at that time, which would be the fall of twenty-eight. Or twenty-six.
Okay.
Yeah.
That, that would work on the number.
Yeah, fall of twenty-six would split you in twenty-seven, twenty-eight.
Okay.
And that would keep, if, this is all assuming we get to build out to twenty-four hundred.
And we wouldn't even have that, I, we, that wouldn't even be, if we, if we back it up that far, that wouldn't even probably be done, would it?
I think it was on the, um, twenty-eight.
Yeah, so it wouldn't even be.
What are the numbers we're looking at for twenty-six on the newest?
Opening, the twenty-six, twenty-seven snapshot is eighteen ninety-five.
Okay, he's got nineteen oh five.
Yeah, nineteen oh five.
So not much difference at high school. But you're talking, like, if, if you're talking as twenty-seven, twenty-eight split, then you're talking having a principal onboard in the middle of twenty-five, twenty-six, athletic coordinator, because those two positions have to, they have to do, before that next year starts and you start ordering, you've gotta have mascot colors, student groups for school songs, like, it's a, it's about an eighteen-month process.
Someone instructed you, I just told you, um, on our plan, the, um, add-on right here opens fall of twenty-seven.
Okay, so that'd be.
The same time.
That'd be good.
Yes, on the same time.
Okay, so from a, from a bond perspective, what we have in front of us is, for this campus, would be, build to a functional capacity of twenty-four hundred, we as a board can limit that in terms of enrollment, and then, and then effectively revise the strategic plan with regard to, high schools not being split on a number, but now being focused on a year to align with U I L changes.
To not go six A in alignment.
And to keep the schools as close to parity as possible in that first year or two.
Yeah, I, uh, I, I support that, uh, the only question I have, that Marty's not here, but you guys have been in contact with him enough, my assumption, when we was given the numbers of the different build-out options at Canyon Falls, was that we would build out that wing to its entirety, but then manage to where the, the classrooms would be limited. And so, which gives us the options to use that space for other, other options, is that still kind of?
Yes, it's still forty thousand square feet. Um, the difference in the adding one fifty versus adding the, up to twenty-four hundred is the storm, the storm, uh, shelter capacity. So the current capacity, or the storm shelter over here right now, according to his assessments, is enough if you just added the one fifty, but it's not enough to add to twenty-four, so that third wing would become in turn a storm shelter, which is part of that pricing difference.
But it, it's also, my understanding is on one fifty, if you're just a single-story wing.
Yes, correct, with just a few classroom spaces.
How do we should build that out to the full build-out, just be done?
Right, and so this, this phase three, the one with the twenty-four hundred was the full forty thousand square feet.
And I think that's what the bond committee supported.
Yes, correct.
And that, isn't that the case in both campuses, though, and I know the bond committee didn't necessarily support it, but, and I know they were following the ten-year strategic plan as it was laid out, we're talking about changing that now, but if we know, we keep saying, it's not a matter of, when, it's not a matter of, yeah, both of them, sorry, I was, um, so therefore, right, I mean, we're talking about now adding capacity in this bond at three seventy-seven, because I understand why they did what they did, because the ten-year strategic plan didn't necessarily need it, well, that was based on twenty-seven hundred, which was gonna be more years out, now we know that's not the case, and somewhat to your point, if we know they're coming, why wouldn't we build it in today's dollars versus six, seven years down the road? When the dollars are gonna be expensive?
Well, yeah.
Yeah, maybe, maybe not to.
I've got opinions, but we'll talk about it later.
Yeah, but maybe, and maybe it's not to.
Or at least to understand those numbers.
Yeah, and, and maybe it's not to the, to the level that the committee was presented with, maybe it's phased, right, but, you know, if we know that, that they're coming, that, that same thought process, to me, makes sense that we know they're coming, and we wanna be prepared to keep them like size, then, you know, why, why wouldn't we consider it?
I'd be curious what it costs. Today, you said some projected.
Come on, you took a deep breath here, if I could say it.
I do think that further back we move that, there's a possibility, if we do go back to the twenty-seven, twenty-eight year, that when we split that, we could potentially then have two four As, because I, I don't think we've, I think it's the next one that would, would be, so I, we very well could have two four As at that point.
But numbers.
Four A, so it's a big four A and a small four A?
It is, uh-huh, and the split there is, uh, twelve ninety-nine's the high end, I don't have the four eighty-two written down, but it's, it's around the seven hundred mark, I think. Six to eight hundred, let me look.
Well, again, the goal was comparable, comparable in size.
Yes.
Ultimately, will be two five As, but if we can stay, the, again, my, when I saw the twenty-four hundred number, just, I was thinking, oh my gosh, we're gonna be.
Nine fifty-six.
A huge disparity, right, if they're two four As for a period of time, and ultimately two five As, I think that still gets us.
It's nine fifty-six.
Where we wanna be.
Yeah, I mean, even as it lays, like, you know, small five A, big four A, I mean, I just, I, I agree, like, I just.
But that, even that would be short-term.
Yeah, you could actually probably get a four, you could possibly get a four eighty-one, four eighty-two, if it's that early.
I think we're allowed to the same classification, I just, the six hundred versus the three twenty-five, like, in my mind, I know that's, it doesn't, it's not gonna work out perfect, but it's, it's not what I envisioned.
And we're looking at numbers, it kinda just divided by certain percentages, these numbers can be driven by however we decide to, zoning, and so, we can't, we gotta, we can't be too loose with those numbers, meaning, but the concept, I think, still, still plays out.
So, anyone else?
I just am curious if three seventy-seven can actually functionally hold seventeen fifty, I had wanted to talk to Mr. Gibson this week, because last week is probably the most people we've ever, students we've ever had in that building, because we had the sixth graders over there for two days.
Twelve ninety-four.
That, yes, exactly. So how did that go, 'cause that's about what they say capacity is, I mean, I have a little sixth grader and a seventh grader, and all they said was lunch was crazy, but.
I think that a lot of that was just because they were trying to keep them separated.
Exactly, and so, but, as far as everything else.
But I think that goes back to.
The bond.
That goes back to the common spaces that the bond committee addressed. Because the common spaces were still fitting the original part of the high school.
Exactly.
Not the add-on that came last time, so those common spaces are, are, are hard to be in with that many students, yes, no doubt.
There's still a delta of at least a hundred and fifty, not two hundred, students.
Right, right, I mean, that's pretty close to what they say functional capacity is there, you just didn't have anyone driving. So parking, you couldn't get a bill for that.
Well, but still, you, you always have a. You always have.
I know I was there.
The whole ninth grade class won't be driving, you don't have any high school, so you do have, you don't have all of them, I mean, half the sophomore class too.
Right, right. And half of the. And half of the sophomores.
So the, so the bond committee didn't.
Daughter didn't drive, tells me that.
Right.
She's a young'un.
Yeah, mine, mine too, yeah, um, so the bond committee did not address, I know they addressed renovations for current capacity, but they didn't address increasing capacity, they weren't recommending increasing capacity, is that correct?
Correct. And I, I mean, you can, there, you can ask them, but I think that was more driven by.
The numbers.
The, the ten-year, current ten-year strategic plan didn't require.
And that was more outside of it, correct, they stayed within that ten-year scope.
We're gonna make changes to keep schools more close in size, and we're gonna move that back.
Right.
Then we need to look at the numbers and see if it does.
I mean, that's what I would wanna know, you know, what, what that would, what we're looking at to actually increase the capacity of three seventy-seven.
So, what I hear you saying, Gray, is if we were to decide to increase the capacity of three seventy-seven, then, uh, we try to do that with early dollars, i.e. twenty-seven or twenty-eight. Uh, so one, I'd like to know what those dollars are, and secondarily, do we have the capacity to do all that we want to do and build that out sooner than later?
Well.
What was the numbers we have? The numbers, the numbers for three seventy-seven expansion?
I've got it.
Fifty million.
Yeah, I've got it right here.
Fifty one five.
Fifteen, and then the year for that escalation was to out to when?
Um, twenty, twenty-one. It's open and fall with thirty.
So what you're asking is.
So it's not, yeah, that escalation.
If you do expansion, capacity, the twenty-four hundred number here, and we do three seventy-seven, those are both gonna have to be going on probably at the same time, do we have the capacity?
Right.
From a T A V perspective, to do it.
So, Mr. Bolts has prepared something for you on that.
Okay.
Cause we also will need, uh, during that time, we can probably push Mills' little tune back a little bit, based on these numbers, maybe to twenty-eight or twenty-nine, but.
Yeah, how many things are we gonna have to have going on at once, and do we have?
Do we have the capacity?
So, they adjusted one of the fifty. Yeah, he should, he should have something for you. Mr. Bolts worked on this for us in preparation for the.
Picture's bold. I gotta tell you, I think you guys are astronomer's best friends.
Yeah.
I don't even glasses.
Mr. Bolts has accepted the.
That's a pod, it's a sponsor. I've never been called Mr. Bolts so much in my life. Nobody ever calls me that.
We took to heart you weren't validated as a kid.
Remember?
Loose lips, I need to be careful, don't I? No, it's good to see you all, and I love the dialogue, it's always interesting to hear what goes into building these plans, and so, we, uh, yeah, you have, we're gonna.
We'll give you the original.
The original that was in your book that we went through when I was out.
Last week.
Right, based off five hundred and eighty-five million, and it's, it's in the, uh, top caption, if you get the two confused. So they both work the same way, the, the, and, and it really comes down to a very simple, um, exercise, and that is that, if you add the additional fifty million, you're essentially plugging in, your sales move around ever so slightly, uh, with the, the, the last would be in twenty thirty-one, and the first plan, twenty thirty-two, and the second plan. And, and then, what you really have to focus on is, you've obviously got additional debt service, because you've got fifty million more you're borrowing, which means that the fifty, you, you go out on the fifty cent cap and call them twenty-five, um, a couple of years longer than you do, uh, if you don't have the fifty million in, so you're, you just constrain yourself a little bit further down the line, both are entirely doable, I think they're both reasonable, I don't think there's anything in here that bothers me from a growth standpoint, because as we discussed, when I was here last, you just don't sell bonds if you don't get to, if you get to the point where growth is stagnant. So the growth comes, and then you sell bonds, and the growth is driven by kids, so it all works hand in hand. So there's not a lot of magic to this at this point.
So, so we stay at the fifty cents three more years?
Correct, yeah.
In the, if we do, if we add the fifty million back for.
So, so Matt, looking, looking at this, and it's probably, you answered it twenty times, but, but let's look at, the seventh elementary school is on this bond proposal. Knowing that we don't know what inflation's gonna be, we don't, we can't necessarily accurately predict that, if we could, we wouldn't be sitting here, we'd be doing something else. But if you remove that from this bond proposal, it still gives you capacity in the future, if you need that seventh elementary to add it to a future bond at that time, at, with more accurate dollar figures for that year, when we need seven, correct, that's, that assumption's correct?
Yep.
Okay.
And if we went that route, if we could push all of the, uh, the other things that were identified as long-term to the bond committee was, the three seventy-seven gym, cafeteria, and how we grow on the build cost, those are all exaggerated numbers that we don't necessarily trust, anyway, I just wonder if we were able to push all of that build out later, i.e. in a second bond, if that's feasible as well, which that would mean that we would.
Which, which, I'm sorry, what are you talking about pushing?
I understand all that you said.
So, you know, in, um, in the, the numbers, the, one, the improvements of, of the new gym at three seventy-seven, and the cafeteria, all that, those numbers are projected to be done in a long time.
Thirty, thirty, twenty-third, sorry, thirty, thirty-one.
We have worked, those worked into bond sales, beginning in twenty-seven, a small portion of it's for planning purposes, and the remainder of that in twenty-nine.
You don't think you could push that one?
To finish that.
And I don't know why you couldn't.
Those are the same.
Cafeteria, how, how is the kids?
I think you can today, do that without. Gotta have the cafeteria extension, which eats up your gym, so even if you sell it, and you're talking about, you said you have to sell them in twenty.
We ended broken down to a portion for planning, beginning in twenty-seven, and the rest, the remainder is a bond sale in twenty-nine.
So they're, they're not planning on building it now, anyway. And so I'm just wondering, if we, if we go forward with an earlier three seventy-seven expansion, etc.
That means you have to come back three years.
We're having to give up on some other things.
I mean, I, I, I appreciate the, the effort the bond committee paid to, to follow the, the strategic plan to get us a ten-year bond where we don't have, we're not having to say, oh man, it's ifs and buts, or we hope this passes, like, the goal is, in, in my mind, for this to pass as much as we can, you know, get out there to community supports, um, I, I'm just. I, I'm just, you know, just, just speaking to the future of elementary seven, like, you could have stagnant growth, but we know we're gonna need high school expansions, so I'm, in my mind, to do those things and not chip, chip this proposal away to two to three years and keep it as long as possible with, with looking at, are there some things that could go on a future bond? Not overhaul with the, you know, six meetings I've been put into this. But, but just thoughtfully look at it and say, are there some things that I feel is the feel, not a fact, but, but I feel a future bond that just had an elementary school on it, um, would be successful.
It'd pass pretty easy.
That's my feeling.
Yes, yeah.
Cause we wouldn't do it unless we need it.
If you have some specific questions, um, from one of the committee members, I can call them to the table.
Can I ask then just their, like, yes, let me know their personal.
Hi, it's your homes and, hi, hello, Mr. McDowell, hello, we got three of them here, yeah, we got three of them. Do y'all mind coming up for just a minute? I'd rather you be up here, so. Why don't you all three come up and they can ask you? It's Mr. Pizzuto, Mr. McDowell, and Mr. Holmes.
Josh, you have to sit over there.
Put a chair in the middle. These three gentlemen served, um, basically on the committee and they were all at different table groups, so there you go.
Is it okay to identify your tables so we can?
I was up front.
One, one, two, three.
You, uh, you, you table one.
Three.
One, three, and six.
And six, yep.
Well, I, just for the record, I have Dr. Johnson at the table as well, facilitator member.
And Marty's here.
And Marty just.
Oh, hello, Mr. Sims, come join the fun. Welcome, welcome.
We have a lot of questions.
We'll get you a chair, come on. One more meeting in the next. Come on in, they're just about to talk to the committee about a few things, so.
Okay.
I'll consolidate that area here, sorry.
Which table were you, Mr. Pizzuto?
Holmes is six, McDowell is three.
Pizzuto is six.
I know, that's fine, I just, I spoke with different committee members just at different tables and got a lot of feedback and all, pretty much a different story or viewpoint from everyone and I just was curious, I get your table, what discussion, how did, because the, um, expansion of the cafeteria and the gym demo was a twenty-six fourteen split, which is a majority but not overwhelming. So, just like the discussion that went on and why some people felt it was a good idea cause your table, everyone voted one way. So, I'm just curious what the discussion was and what you saw as the long-term vision. Was it the ten-year number and just not seeing the need for the expansion of that campus in that timeframe or?
And I think our table was the one that voted differently than most of the other tables on that and it wasn't a if, it was a, just a timing.
Timing.
And giving it, just because of the uncertainty in some of the growth that we're seeing, you know, with, with it slowing down, speeding back up a little bit, but knowing that change is giving it a little time for that mature, understand, you know, hold that off too. Our, our, our intentions were saying to hold that off.
Right.
Just to see how things grow over the next couple of years. And it would still give time to make that adjustment, um, but like you said, with the numbers, it didn't look like if it was an if to do it, but just a when type of thing.
Thank you.
For us, it was, it was a, like, twofold concern. One concern, and I think we heard it last night when we were at the town council, is why do we always wait until it's a fire drill? And having worked on the twenty twenty-two bond, that's the number one complaint we had during the twenty twenty-two bond was we had to do something on that one. Secondly, I, I think it was from a bond fatigue aspect of it, right? I, I think, um, I think Dr. Johnson told us it's twenty-four to thirty months before something gets, uh, opens the doors. And so, then if you look at it from that standpoint, and, and I, I have, I appreciate this discussion, guys. I hope the whole community gets to see it because I think there's a lot of misinformation out there. I appreciate you guys doing this, but.
It's only audio. Shops are audio.
Actually, no, we're live streaming, we're not live streaming, we're live video and audio. So, I mean, not live, but it's recorded video, recorded audio, so you are on the screen.
Yeah.
All right, buddy.
The, uh, the, the aspect from that, and, and I do believe all the three seventy-seven were a lot of discussions cause I think at one time we approved one, but you couldn't do one without the other.
Right.
And, and then, I mean, a five hundred eighty-five million dollar bond's a lot of money. And so, we are trying, you know, we were like, oh, let's cut the, the three seventy-seven expansion off of it cause it's fifty million dollars. I, I understand what everybody's saying with the elementary, it's a hundred and twenty-four million. I think when you look at it and you say, hey, you got something for forty million and now it's a hundred and twenty-four million, we can't, we can't dictate that, we can't change that. I mean, we'd love to, we'd love to go for forty million still today.
Right.
But that's just not feasible. So, that was kind of our aspect of it is be aligned with the ten-year strategic plan and be forward-thinking cause I think like Liz said, it's twenty thirty, so, you know, when the bonding, uh, capacity's there, we're already, we're already there. We know it's coming and, and that was our, our position.
My table voted against all three of the three seventy-seven expansion renovation projects. And really, I think my table was just very pragmatic in nature. We said, what is the ten-year growth plan? And how can we most efficiently assign dollars to address the plan? And so, us from a simple math perspective, in fact, we had a long discussion about only expanding this campus by a hundred and fifty seats because that, in the numbers, in ten years, that's all that is necessary. And so, we were trying to be very efficient with the, the dollars that were assigned in this bond. And that's where we landed. And, and of course, you know, we didn't have any information about a strong desire to kind of have the two campuses be equivalent or near equivalent in size. And that was a big piece of this that I think was missing, and certainly on my table, I would assume all the tables. That's an entirely different perspective.
Well, you know, I think we concluded earlier, those numbers change mid-process, you know? So, we were always as a board thinking, these are the capacity numbers that we had, therefore, that's where the numbers came from. But actually, they've changed to a greater extent, which gives us more flexibility.
Yeah, we blame Marty for that.
Was the six hundred number though, was that not driven by the survey in twenty-two?
It was.
Six hundred.
Graduating classes.
Absolutely.
Yes.
Cause I think there's been some misinformation on that.
The way that worked out with twenty-two fifty seventeen fifty was truly, could we realize that capacity? And we thought we could. And then secondarily, it was a, well, oh, by the way, that keeps us all under six hundred. It's a positive.
Yeah. The community survey, you had a, a majority of people in the community survey vote for graduating class size less than six hundred, yeah.
I think you guys also got to witness just how fast some of this stuff gets dropped on us. Now, you got the night of, you get, you find out there's a new subdivision coming or development coming and boom, a hundred and twenty-four dollar, a hundred and twenty-four million dollars showed up on the option. Right, that was never there, never talked about. And that's how fast it happens sometimes, right? And, and that's, I think, what, having been on the board a long time and to your point about always feeling we're hanging a ball, always having to do this in a three-year window, we gotta do this or we're going to portables. That's been, every bond I've been a part of has been, that's been the discussion. We don't get this part passed, so we never, we never expanded our thought process to go to a ten-year plan. We didn't even have a ten-year plan in the last one. So, now we have one, um, we look at it twice a year with new numbers. We're constantly, as you hear now, talking about evaluating it, hey, does that make sense? Well, we have new information and new, new leaders that tell us, hey, you need to, you probably shouldn't have done the number because if that number falls in a certain realignment, you're, you're painting yourself into a corner. The class, there's all kinds of, it just seems to change nonstop. So, I think, much like you said, it's, it, it's not a matter of if we're gonna need this space, it's just a matter of when. And if we know that and, and we can make some hard choices on some of these, I'm gonna point to the elementary number seven to say, hey, guess what? Yeah, we think we'll need it, let's see what happens. Things changed in six meetings in here, right? So, how fast it can change and that money may be better spent today to add capacity in today's dollars, assuming we have the capacity to do it.
You know, we, we always.
Maybe that's a more fiscally responsible way to do it.
You know, we always like about how we've just been reacting, been reacting. And I'll tell you, we've got money for elementary five, middle school one, um, already bonded and those are what we needed in short term. I don't think, I think we're being reactive in this case, trying to force a ten-year plan. Cause I think that just forces the numbers up, makes, forces us to use, and I hate to, to look at you, Marty, but.
I'm interested in going across from them.
Unreasonable growth rates. And my fear is that, so we accept those and they don't turn out, but they will turn out because people will basically build to what you have budgeted. So, that, that, that's, that's finally pushed back is what can we do for the next four or five years of what we need that money for? And does that come across? And let everybody know, this is, we'll need, just like this time, we said, we're gonna need another bond. I think we're a year too early for that bond, now that we've discussed this, I think we're pushing that too quickly. But we'll need another bond and that bond will do seventh grade, I mean, I'm sorry, the seventh elementary, the, the three seventy-seven billion, et cetera. I think that gives us a more reasonable number that can get approved. That's finally, that's my personal thing.
I, I think, you know, and, and again, I'm not trying to throw logic into something. I know I talk a lot about that. The bond number, it's a big, it's a huge number. It's the biggest number we've ever had put in front of us a, as a board in the history of Argyle I S D.
We're not different there than any other district.
Absolutely, we're not. You know, we don't have the billion-dollar bond, those are out there. If there's multiple districts with billion-dollar bonds, uh, I, I think what, what we have to remember is that the tax rate is, tax rate.
Yep.
Your taxes aren't going up. Until you look at.
Twenty sixty-one, looks pretty bad.
No, 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 that's, that's going down.
No, 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 they're going.
Yeah, then you're able to maintain your tax rate.
Your tax rate is the same.
My bad, I stand corrected. I saw it go up, I thought it was up and I was like, what happened? You're maintaining your current tax rate.
You're maintaining your current tax rate until twenty thirty-seven, based upon updated numbers from Mr. Bowles.
Yes.
Wonderful Mr. Bowles.
He is wonderful.
Um, and, and so regardless of the number that's put out there, your tax rate's not going up. Conversely, if we don't need it, we're not gonna sell the bonds to build it and there's no penalty to anyone on, on that. Correct, Mr. Bowles?
Correct.
You don't spend it, there's no penalty.
How do you?
You don't comment, you don't issue it.
And I, and I'll say this too, cause there's a lot of times, you know, people will argue when, when a school district's doing a bond and there's no tax rate increase, people will argue that, yes, my taxes are still going up. They're going up because the property values of your home are going up. The tax rate did not. We're able to do this by maintaining the current tax rate, am I accurate?
Yeah, your tax rate will stay the same. Your taxes may go up or down depending on the market value of their property.
Correct.
So, I mean, my concern in making a shorter-term bond to your point is I just know, and, and Jeff's not here, right? I'm not seeing Jeff.
I don't see Jeff, he's not in here.
Jeff's not in here. Cause I know he's talking about the length of time that it's taking with the municipalities to get some of these projects through. And he said it could be, you know, eighteen months, two years sometimes, even in advance to try and, you know.
We're thirty-six months right now.
Yeah, to, to put something on the ground. And I think if we, we put ourselves up against another timeline or another wall where we, we say, well, we're gonna take these things out of this bond now and make it more short-term and then we'll do this, one, we're kind of beholden to the voters to approve it and what if they don't? We're kind of up against that wall again. Two, in, in future dollars, it's gonna cost more money. And, and three, it, it's just that time, you can, you can plan better. You can get with the municipalities easier, you can go through, I mean, we just saw last night with the S U P and we still have to deal with the site plan with the town of Argyle.
Some municipalities are adding time.
Yes.
That's outside of lead time on things that you need in regards to construction. So, to say thirty-six months, that, that's nebulous if you have a municipality that doesn't want your school in their, in their town.
And I, I mean, that's just, that, those are things, I mean, municipalities approve developments. We don't get a vote in that. They, they decide, we have five municipalities in this district, then they decide, are you gonna put a, 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 a very dense development in, like, let's say Harvest? Or are you gonna put something in? I know Argyle's gone to a one acre minimum, but is it gonna stay that way? That's at the whim of the town council. You don't know two, three years from now if that's gonna change. And so, there's a lot of empty land in our, you know, big open land in Argyle which, you know, five, six, seven, ten years down the road, if.
It will change.
It, it will change, it will change. And so, I think that for us to be shortsighted in that regard is kind of shooting ourselves in the foot in a way because there are other outside factors that we don't have control over.
When you have thirty-five square miles, you have a lot of ground that can develop.
Oh, yeah, I mean, yeah, and I totally agree. And, I mean, I think about it as, I mean, I moved here thirteen years ago and having been a, a school district person my entire career, I mean, I'm pretty well aware of looking at school district boundaries. And even when I got here, Harvest was dirt, Canyon Falls was dirt, the high school didn't exist, Waterburg didn't exist, Five T didn't exist, um, and obviously First Ranch wasn't even out there. But if you looked actually on a map of the school district, you saw how much empty land was within the boundaries of the district. There, there was dirt, dirt, and dirt. And anybody that, that moved here and looked at that educated themselves, especially if they have kids, that didn't realize that this district wasn't gonna go like this at some point, you know, you, you have to realize that. And so, and we don't, we didn't have any control over Flower Mountain Ranch. Flower Mountain did all that. And we, we have to, I hate to say react to it, but we do, we have to react to it.
Prepare for it.
We have to prepare for it. And so, we're always coming kind of after the fact. We didn't get a vote whether or not Flower Mountain Ranch happened, it happened. Um, same thing with Harvest, the same thing with Canyon Falls. I mean, we're not the municipality and, and I'm kind of concerned that with all of that, that there's, there's too many players and too many factors and you start talking U I L and, and all of that alignment. I just think if we can prepare as far out as we can, within reason, I think we're being smart doing that. Um, cause I don't wanna get caught up against that wall again. And like you said, if it slows down, we don't sell the bonds, we don't build the building and there's nothing wrong with that, in my opinion, so.
Well, I also think there is actually a small benefit to the inflationary numbers that we're having to use at this point because of what everybody's experienced over the last couple of years. So, we're using, it was nine percent, right, three-quarter percent per month.
Correct.
So, we're building in what is, what historically is quite excessive from an inflationary perspective. Now, if things go back to where they have been historically, we have a buffer. And, and that's good. And to your point, I understand that if you're looking at future construction dollars, just because an elementary looks like the inflationary numbers will be this, the actual market is gonna tell us what the costs are. And if, if inflation has lowered because construction has leveled out somewhat, we may have inflated numbers in the bond for eighty-six, eighty-eight million dollars, but it may actually be seventy-five, right? So, I actually think that is a benefit to trying to get the bond through this, at this time because that is actually, in my mind, a benefit to the numbers.
Well, and I agree with the concept, I really do, in that if this is explained as it is, this is just basically just a line of credit. And the board still has significant responsibility on getting the best prices, deciding where that money should go. But this gives us the flexibility to do that and do it quicker if, if it serves a purpose or not. I love that concept, don't get me wrong. My only fear is, does that concept get passed because of the number? And so, then if it doesn't get passed, well, then we're just.
And listen, you're right. I mean, first bond, I, the same year I elected was forty-four million, then one sixty-six, then two, whatever. They're growing, right? And then five eighty-five right now, if you were to take off ES seven, you're down to four sixty-one, then add capacity back for, for three seventy-seven, that's another fifty, so you're, you're. So you're, you've still, since we've been sitting here and talked about, you've saved seventy-four million dollars, if you went that route. It's still five, is four ninety-nine better than five eleven, sure it is.
I would, um, if we have flexibility, I would go the route of taking off elementary seven. Because by the time we need money for that, we'll probably need money for something else that we're, that we're unaware of right now. So, I mean, it's, it's a legitimate bond. It's also a little more reasonable.
So, just to confirm, Mr. Bowles, Liz, if we were to do, take off, well, we didn't even say that earlier, adding the fifty million. Even if we left elementary seven, then they're adding fifty million, we're still okay? It just extends our, our fifty cent cap three more years.
It starts going down, this is our.
Yes, thank you, thank you. I was like, I'll be dead, but I'm sorry for the people alive.
I hope not, it's not that far.
It's not that far out.
Twenty sixty?
Oh, twenty thirty-seven.
No, I was looking down.
She's going all the way down.
I was going all the way down, and I didn't see the point zero six nine eight, I saw point six nine eight. And I was like, what happened that year? And what do you know that we don't know?
Well, if I, if I were running a business or managing my fin- my finances of my family, I would drill down and, and look at every specific one of these. But it sounds like that's really not necessary. This is just a blueprint of what we kind of need to get accomplished. And we're asking for a line of credits so we can do that when it's best service to the district.
And I think it's important, on your point, to re- to remind everybody that's listening and just going through this process, cause a lot happened since the fall. The capital improvements piece, those were actually facility assessments, those were walked, those were determined, line, you know, line items, y'all can talk a little, because we, we talked about that. They weren't just a blanket number of a twenty-year refresh, cause we had that conversation with the board. Just to say a twenty-year refresh, refresh is this amount per square foot. Like, we, we line item those items to say, these are the capital needs that we need. So, um, it was to a pretty granular level, I would.
Well, and, and the one thing that came out of that for our table, cause we had Randy there, and I know Josh is on the oversight committee. And the fact that you guys saved so much money in twenty seventeen by doing some of the things that you guys did on the bond. So, we should have faith and confidence in this board to understand the savings and the money that's being spent as well, because historically speaking, you guys have done that.
So I know you guys can't speak for your tables, for the committee, but as individuals, just comes, you miss, you, you mentioned at the beginning that, you know, had you known some of the conversations that we're having today, it potentially could have changed, you know, the conversations you had at your table. What's your viewpoint on three seventy-seven expansion, based on what we've talked about so far today?
Yeah, I mean, it, it makes sense to me, if that's the board, the way the board would like to go and keep the high schools evenly matched. The, the only thing that I don't understand is the data we received showed that campus renovation being complete in twenty thirty-one. But the data I'm seeing, you're gonna be over twenty-four hundred students by that time over here. So, I don't really understand how that would work, I think there should be a conversation around that. Uh, but I, but I agree also about elementary school number seven. If you look at it, that project is not necessary until outside the ten-year window. And so, if you felt like you were trying to keep costs down while doing what you need to do at three seventy-seven, I think that would be a viable piece. And we had a long conversation at our table about that, and, and we just decided, again, very aligned with the conversations that, that's happening right now. Let's give the school district and its board money to make wise decisions as they move along. And so that's why we include it. I think the same thing would be true for three seventy-seven.
Uh, yeah, I, I absolutely agree, I, I just, I, I think it's, growth is coming, I think we've gotta be smart with it. I'm concerned if we bring back a bond in three years with a thirty-six-month recap, bond fatigue. Uh, that, that was something we did speak about. Uh, so I'd be somewhat concerned about that from a standpoint of, they're coming to, you know, asking for money every, every two years, every three years. Uh, but I'm, I'm one hundred percent behind what the district and the board has done in the past with all our bonds.
And our table, so our table took a little bit different look at it, um, when it comes to bond fatigue. So, you know, understandably, the voting for it every few years, you know, some, you know, some people look at it and get a little tired that way. We saw it as the number was very high for, even for a ten-year plan for this piece of it. And with seven being that far out, three seventy-seven being from what the dates we saw a little further out as well, that's why we, you know, our table voted the way we did. Um, just because, looking at the past bonds that were, that did get approved and did not get approved. Um, and looking at other schools as well, like that five hundred, you know, million mark was, seemed to be aligned to where, you know, the community stopped supporting it. Um, or, or lost that support. And so, you know, our goal and our intention was looking at, what do we need in the next three, you know, three to five years? Um, within the, the ability to revisit that, within that time, and plan for the, you know, the continued time. So just because, you know, we, the way we saw it is just because we had a ten-year plan, didn't mean, the way we were thinking is that, it didn't mean the bond had to go all the way through that, that, that timeline.
And I think to his point, I'm talking about the number of the five, that's for all propositions together. And so we know that Prop one is different, then Prop two is gonna be your, your sports complex, your baseball, softball. Prop three would be your one-to-one technology. So that number will actually be divided two as well into three additional amounts.
Would've been really interesting in the last bond, had we gone through a facility assessment. Where would we be today, had that been done? I appreciate it, guys.
Yes, thank you. Anything else for the committee? Okay, thank y'all very much.
I'd be in support of this administration looking at the twenty-seven number number, and kind of reevaluating that, looking at that for us as a board. I know Dr. Carpenter said if we're gonna make that recommendation, we should say that in here for them to be something to look at, so.
Cause we would need to bring you a revision for an adoption.
Also, I think it gives you a head start on trying to think about how, what is the best way to, to start the split, do the splits? And you've had experiences, so we're very grateful that experience and very.
And I just think that it's closer than we realize from a planning standpoint. Um, and so I, I think that's what's starting to kind of settle in with us, is now that we've gotten through this five, and we've gotten through this process. That's more, that's more reality. Um, and I think that from, from our standpoint is, we gotta back that up. There's, there's a, there's something each year that needs to occur.
And another thing that we can be ahead of curve on is utilizing the technology to take advantage of the various CTE programs that either campus may have. You know, uh, we don't physically have to be onsite to learn. And so, how can we take advantage of that within the campuses, to take advantage of district-led material?
And it's not uncommon for districts that don't have, that aren't large enough to have standalone CTE facilities, to have non-duplicated programming at either a centralized location of some sort of a repurposed facility, or at a high school campus and that students share. They can still be their home campus, their home campus number, they can still be involved in fine arts, extracurriculars. But be able to be a part of a, a, a program that might not be housed at their campus, and that's possible, I've seen, I mean, been a part of that, so.
And I'm stuck thinking, how, how can we be creative and not make it necessary for them to be there physically?
Correct, yeah, you have distant learning options, absolutely.
So, based on what Sam said, you guys will look at the strategic plan, make a recommendation?
So we'll bring that, February fifth is the budget workshop. We also will have a special meeting that evening for the board to consider calling a bond. Um, so we just need to, and then we can bring a revised strategic growth plan at that point. We would just need direction that you're, like you're giving us now, and then any direction you want on the bond recommendation.
So, are we clear on the bond recommendation that we would like?
Yeah, I'd give you mine. I'd like to see elementary seven come off.
Second though.
Uh, and I'd like to see capacity at three seventy-seven added.
It's not action, I'm just. She's in the verbiage.
I didn't hear you, so.
I said, I second that, but it wasn't action, I'm just saying, I concur.
Uh, okay, I, I am, uh, just gonna ask this. I, I agree with all that, but, uh, you know, there's some of these things in this package that I think may be grossly, uh, overstated, and then also some of it, I, I wonder whether it's even necessary. But now, is, is this the time to argue that? Or is it basically, we have the, uh, we have the capacity, and then those arguments are, are, are done later in time by a future board?
I, I think at this point, we have the capacity, and we have to go on, you know, what we use our consultants for. And then later on, depending on which project's going up for being sold and being budgeted, then we would have those discussions at that time. Cause we, we wouldn't want, I mean, I, I hear what you're saying, if we say we're, we've escalated this elementary six out to eighty-eight point seven million. But we, we're not gonna budget that much, cause if we build it a year earlier, we won't need that much. Or if things slow down, you know, the grades go down, I mean, there's gonna be some fluctuation there.
I guess the specific question I have, maybe folks are in the committee, this is such a small, well, you and I's lives, it's a big number, this is a small number here. The sixth grade center going from four million to fourteen million simply because we're gonna rehab a gym. I wouldn't vote on that if I was a board member at the time, uh, but I'm wondering if we would have to allow it if we're at board at the time.
Okay, so, the way I would answer that question is, the capital improvements for those facilities are really for aging facilities. Which in our case would be anything built prior to twenty fifteen. And so, at the time of the bond committee, that is what we've, that we, we recommended as potential capital needs, that's what they, that's what they looked at. If we get down the line and we see some sort of a repurpose for that sixth grade center because something else changes, then that may not be exactly the same project. By the time we get to that, the, what year was that, what year do we have those in?
Um, I believe that one, I wanna call it.
And that's the way I would answer that.
It'd make me feel most comfortable.
And also, ju- and just so we're clear, it's not just the gym, it's that gym building, so where.
Right, it's everything in the A P, it's everything in that whole.
Or the admin offices, just the.
But that's gonna be part of the capital improvement on older facilities, what's on.
Right, yes, that, that's the way, cause that's all kind of together as capital improvements for aging facilities. But the Hilltop Sixth Grade Center, three seventy-seven, had specific line items that if they continue in their capacity that we're expecting them to be indefinitely, this is what would need to be addressed. If the use of that facility changes, then obviously the function of the, the capital improvements would need to be adjusted.
That makes me more comfortable.
The, would, would, does that make sense? I mean, okay.
So the three seventy-seven capital improvements are in addition to the expansion?
Yeah, and the, the capital improvements for three seventy-seven were separate, we pulled them out separate, yes, cause we were trying to line item.
Yeah, that's how it's listed here.
So there could be some savings if both goes at the same time, if we're.
If there's overlap, absolutely. Yeah, we evaluate the budget at the beginning of each project. If I'm you, and, and we get three years down the road and you've seen three percent inflation, I'm, I'm pulling those budgets back accordingly to what the historic inflation's actually shown, you know? You have the ability to, to adjust to that, and it seems like the, you know, the, the right thing to do. So that could take away that particular fear that we were, you know, if I'm carrying nine percent, my hope is that it's better than nine percent for sure. But I've gotta give you something that I also think is gonna give you a shot at getting there at the end, because if it is nine, if it's eleven percent, we're in trouble. And we've seen that, so.
And we'll have CSPs approve the margin.
Well, and we'll, yeah, we'll be efficient with how we, how it goes out, so that's at your discretion, obviously. But, uh, sure, and, and, you know, so, projects will certainly evolve over time. And, and as we get into the nuts and bolts of actually designing these things, we're sitting with staff, we're talking about, you know, the bits and pieces that need to happen. So we're taking, we're going from thirty thousand feet down to ground level pretty quick as we enter that process, but we haven't gotten down to that ground.
Have you, now that you're here, we were talking about the three seventy-seven expansion, where, had those numbers changed from your original proposal?
I don't believe so, no, so, we, we, all we did was originally I had it all lumped in one big number, and we just split it apart. And so that was, that was the, that was the change that happened along the way. So if you look at some of the early documents that we, that I was producing, all of those were combined, and, and we broke those, broken those into two separate options somehow.
When this site plan was approved in Canyon Falls, was it approved with the third wing?
It was always part of the process, yes, the plan. And I think that's where the twenty-two fifty came in, because we thought it was seventeen fifty, and that third wing would add five hundred seats.
So we probably won't hit any major hiccups with Flower Mountain?
With the town?
Yes.
I wouldn't think so for that.
Well, we would be expansion of three seventy-seven.
We're, we're on the same footprint, so it's just making some renovations there, I mean, who knows?
We're not adding, we're not adding.
When you're adding, when you're dealing with three seventy-seven, and you're.
It'll be the same process we'll, you know, have to go through for the stadium, it's, it's the not, it's not a P D, I don't call it that, but it's the, it's the site plan. It's a specific kind of a use for this particular site. And so every step we add, we amend what's been done prior, essentially. And so you look at the history of all of the things and any variances that were granted, and we amend all of that to whatever the next thing is. It's, it'll be the same, but it's the same process every time, so.
And they've essentially added on to that how many times through the town?
At three seventy-seven? Several.
Several.
Yeah.
But even just the, even the classroom, classroom adds though.
There were at least, so before the two-story add.
Or three seventy-seven?
It was built in either three or four phases, like well before I, I got here. And then at, since two thousand twelve, we've added on the classrooms, we've added on the I C, we've added on one of the field houses. And, um, added the, uh, the charcoal charges, baseball softball. So those.
So there's a history of, of that particular footprint being expanded with, within our town, by our town.
And do they think that's gonna be like a thirty-six month process, or is it mostly new construction that's the thirty-six month process?
Well, you gotta, uh.
An occupied.
It's an occupied campus, and so if you, if you have any efficiencies in design and permitting, you're gonna, they're gonna go to construction. Because you're gonna be able to do most of your work over the summers.
Right, it's gonna be in phases.
So when I've looked at planning those, I've tried to plan multiple summers, so you'll start, you know, starting at the beginning of work, start through the school year, nice weekends, and then that's the final summer to finish.
So I have just one crazy question, uh, in addition to office. When we look at the cost for our campuses embedded in the cost, the projection that you have, especially after being at last night's town council meeting. Um, do we have anything in there for infrastructure that, that we may have to build extra? Inbedded in some of these?
Typically, we're not including onsite costs unless, but there's nothing that we specifically were aware of that, that we added to this one. So, we, we would have onsite development, meaning, so we're, we're assuming that there is, uh, utilities reasonably close. And so, you know, we, we carry money for onsite development. Now, if, if you've got, if you buy a site that's off a long way, and we gotta run a mile and a half of sewer, that's a different, that's a different scenario. So that's something that you would wanna evaluate as you look at potential land purchases, and I know that you guys typically do so.
Have we ever considered that, considering how limited land is?
And what, what? We've looked at sites, uh-huh, we've looked at sites that, um, needed sewer, um, and evaluated those based on, you know, how long the line would need to run, and how much that would cost.
Does it make it cost prohibitive?
Yes, most of the time.
Yeah.
Same thing with roads.
We're not the best, we're not the best.
We're not, but we all.
Same thing with roads.
Our town, we can't use roads either, so.
Clearly. We build that road. New press.
I guess, so my question is, not knowing those things right now, like for instance, the situation last night at the council meeting. Gateway doesn't exist, they wanted to shut us off at Postmaster, there is no traffic light. We can all argue the points on who should've been responsible for what, or what should've been there by now, or all that kind of stuff. Um, what happens in the future if we get to that point? I, I wanna be able to think that in order to make something work, do we have the money in the, in the bond budget to be able to say, okay, we'll go in havesies with you on this road, or we'll do whatever? I mean, it's having that extra little bit of money for those unforeseen things that come up, that who knows? And every site is different.
Yeah, uh, so there, there is some contingency built into, to the pricing that we, that we provided. And then I, you know, I think that you've probably got some of that potentially in the land cost.
You have to consider that in the land, I would think when you're going, looking at the purchase and what's available, what's not, what the cost may be associated with that.
Okay.
It's more so with your land. It's more so with your land budget than it is your, I see your building budget.
And I noticed we had land acquisitions slash buses slash maintenance is seventy-five million. Does that include all three of those? So we, do we break it out to what was land, what was buses?
We haven't yet, no. But we we can do that, I mean, that's just, that's that, with that group, that that grouping that that all goes in.
Yeah.
Oh, for the bond itself?
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay, I mean, I would, I would just be curious to know the breakdown on that, just in general. I mean, how you came up with that number?
We originally had about half of that, and the bond committee was very adamant that we needed more in there for land. So the buses, the buses portion is not an insignificant amount, but most of that is land.
The largest chunk of that.
Yes.
And the other was maintenance, what is that?
That was.
We had a, we had a s- a small amount, it was not a a ton, but it was just for any, any kind of general security uh, or, you know, refuelling to be replaced.
Yeah, kind of your age, kind of your H B, some of your, some of your, yeah, maybe not so much campus related.
Right.
Capital improvements.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you.
Okay, so I think we have our direction as a district. Uh, so on the fifth, we will bring back a revised version of the ten-year strategic plan, let's use, consider that. Um, and then we will also bring back the bond package, taking off ES seven and adding the three seventy-seven seat portion. Is that the correct direction?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Thanks, Bill.
Okay, so, we're going to adjourn to the executive session.
Thank you all for coming.
Thank you.
Very much.
Thank you very much. Appreciate you helping.